For Tuesday, August eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone this meeting is being recorded on the town's YouTube channel. Participation in this meeting is your consent to be recorded and rebroadcast. At this time, please move or turn off any electronic devices. Thank you. Roll call, please.
William Clevenger.
Here.
Bill Giffen.
Here.
Phil Ham.
Here.
Don Richardi.
Here.
Chris West.
President.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is in the blood of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is third reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh, one oh. An ordinance amending and restating ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash oh oh eight, two thousand twenty-one dash oh oh six, two thousand eighteen dash oh seventeen, and two thousand seven dash oh oh nine, regulating the use of golf carts within the corporate limits of the town of Culver. Whereas there's been an increase in the use of golf carts operated on public streets, roads, alleys, and walkways within the town of Culver. Whereas the town council believes that in order to preserve the health and safety of its citizens, that is necessary to regulate the use of golf carts operated on the streets, roads, alleys, and walkways within the town limits. Now therefore be ordained. Section eleven. Anyone violating any provisions of this ordinance shall be subject to a fine of one hundred and fifty dollars per violation. If a person has cited for a violation of this ordinance more than three times, the registration shall be revoked for that individual and/or golf cart. And that individual and/or golf cart shall no longer be allowed to operate in the limits of the town of Culver under this ordinance for a period of one year. If a violation involves conduct that would constitute a crime under the laws of the state of Indiana, at the discretion of the Culver Police Department, the registration shall be revoked for that individual and/or golf cart. And that individual and/or golf cart shall no longer be allowed to operate within the limits of the town of Culver under this ordinance for a period of one year. We're on third read. I entertain a motion. Pass on third read.
Come on.
It's been moved by Mr. Giffen, seconded by Mr. West. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ordinance amended. Janice.
Members, I've seen your guide.
Are you in a meeting something?
We do have them here as well, so if you want to get them. Just need to grab them, wait, go place them all as needed.
I'll bet.
To the budget hearings, um, so I'm not here to talk about that. I didn't want to take up too much of your time, Margot. That day to bring you to marathon sessions. Um, so today I just wanted to make sure that everybody here knows about Meals on Wheels. That's another service that we offer in our agency. And we are trying to start a route in Culver. You, you had a really nice program here a couple of years ago, and it was all volunteer run. Meals were coming out of Millers here in town. And then COVID hit and this really lost the volunteers. Millers didn't have enough people to staff their cooking and their meals and all that stuff, so um, we are ready now to take it up ourselves. Um, we do have four other routes that we do. Um, we do two, and one of the hardest one is Burberry. And women actually have their own program as well. So I have secured some funding already through real services for that. And I also have gotten Marshall Starks on board to deliver the routes for us. So all we need is people that need them. We're just trying to make sure that the council and there's a yes and there is a where. All they have to do is call us. It's our friend that we're part of is for people over sixty. They're either homebound or a nutritional risk. Sure a lot of times anybody over sixty, um, especially if they live alone, they don't want, you know, bother to cook for themselves. Not except for myself, but I'm young. So, um, this would be Meals on Wheels are hot meals delivered Monday through Friday every day. They cancel whenever there's not going to be home or anything. And it's also more than the nutritional part of it is that someone's checking on them every day. So especially if you have all the people living alone. The welfare check, we have a whole process if we expect to deliver and they're not home. You know, we call them, we call their emergency contact, can't give you the one of those, we do call them, please take the welfare check. And what you need from a program for a lot of people.
Is there a handout sheet with all that information on that?
Um, just for meals, um, but all information given the senior guide. A lot of other services that we offer, we do a lot of referrals to different places. We have the volunteer lawyer network meets in our building, um, twice a month they come and do, you know, free consultations with people. We have lots of social programming classes and car jukes and all that kind of stuff, so that's all that information that's in there as well.
And you might just want to tell people where you live and where your house.
It's implement, um, it's thirteen of my West Harrison Streets, right in front of Ankers Woods or Freedom Park. Uh, we've got both right there in the backyard.
Thank you. Anything else, Janice?
That's all of that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes. Department head report, AMS. What, she could have, have anything? Is Jeff online? Okay. Fire, Terry?
Got one thing, I do have a few more of my recruits that have went through their class and passed. I'm going to be hopefully bringing them to the next meeting. Need them? That's it. I've got, uh, also I've got about six or seven guys, I think there's eight, nine guys in a diet program that that showed interest in our diet team kind of went a little rive and we jumped back on top of it and training a bunch of new people, so.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Terry. Wayne? Everybody read the? Yep.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve? It's been moved by Mr. Giffen's. Mr. Giffen's?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. West. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Approved.
And we had our crap on over the weekend. Sure the number.
Hmm.
A lot of them. Forty percent. Well, it was down ten percent from last year. Yeah.
Weather was. Weather was pretty crazy, wasn't it?
No.
It's been.
It was the afternoon they got.
Oh, okay.
It was cloudy.
Yeah. I was out of town.
What?
I want the best morning for.
Anything else, Wayne? All right, thank you. Bark, Amber? Not a thing? Bob, are you online for utilities?
He had two things he asked me to present. The first is a quote from JWC Environmental for twenty-four thousand seven dollars, and this is to repair a master radiator pump at the sewer plant. Basically, there's stuff from them and it chews it up and it's not good. Or it's processed, that would say.
Process?
I don't know. I wasn't, you know, it could be a lot of detail.
We're going to have.
The sheets that come from.
How much was that again?
Twenty-four thousand seven dollars.
Okay. I'll make motion to approve that. Then. Then moved by Mr. Richardi and seconded by Mr. Ham. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And Bob did submit the, uh, application for the community costumes program. That is not going to be as expensive as anticipated. All that to say that he also, he has a quote here from E and B paving for a number of patches around town um, in the amount of three thousand dollars. Don't have the specific list, but it's, you know, where they're, they had to dig for water or, you know, whatever, right? But that's three thousand dollars.
Full packer.
I think it's usually hot pack. I believe it would turn the summer, so.
A motion to approve the, uh, quote from E and B paving for three thousand dollars.
So.
To move Mr. Ham, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Richardi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Books report.
I have four invoices for your approval. Two of them are from EJ Prescott at four thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. And seven thousand one sixty-two twenty-five, and that's, uh, out of water for materials and supplies. The next one is Thomas Excavating for sixty-six thousand six hundred eleven dollars, dollars and eleven cents. And that is for the Oakwood pump project. I believe that is pay up number six. And then finally, Marshall County Council on Aging, five thousand dollars out of Riverboat, which was approved last year at.
Motion to approve claims over twenty-five hundred dollars? They're moving. They're moved by Ms. Giffen, seconded by Mr. Ham. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have one more thing. There is a letter that Shannon needs, um, for Mr. Clevenger to sign. Basically with the, you accrued the Thomas Excavating, there are two more applications and pay requests in there. Um, we're going to go ahead and pay this one. We're holding the next two until this letter is signed by Thomas Excavating and we'll pay off the rest. Um, but they, as you know, they have had quite a difficult time obtaining his SANS number. Um, and it is.
Still hadn't been done.
They still have not been able to obtain it. This, the letter that they sent out this afternoon explains all the steps that they went through to obtain it. They're still going to continue working on it, but we need to close out the grant because the park is open. You know, Oakwood is done. So, um, and, but they are allowing us to request the reimbursement. And, and they're fine with that. We will have a finding on our audit until that Thomas obtains their SANS number. Once that's done, stuff will be cleared off.
Funding goes away.
Right. We need to keep Thomas kind of hold them to the fire to get that SANS number. Because until they obtain it, we will not be able to apply for any of our for poker grants, which I don't think there's any on the horizon. I also don't know how I was going to take them to get my SANS number, but in order to close out this chapter, I need for Mr. Clevenger to send this letter. Um, Thomas Excavating will sign it as well.
Do we know what the holdup is on?
They had, well, it's, one, it's not an easy process to begin with, and I'm kind of dreading having to get ours again, because you have to redo it, I think, every year.
Okay.
Um, but I guess they had, um, I think one of their employees obtained a SANS number. And then the email that was associated with that went away. So he was getting, SANS was sending information, that old email address, when the owners of the company applied for the SANS number, and they were told, although you can't have it because your organization already has one. It was just, it was a whole mess, so no one's, you know, the people at SANS aren't being.
It's a cluster.
It, it's.
Red paint.
It's a civil agency.
It's all, you know, it's all detailed in the letter.
Yes.
Very clear.
Okay.
Yeah, but just so, just so you're aware, it's, you know, they have been trying.
Well, we know that.
And, you know, we just need to be able to move on.
Since I make a motion that we allow people to sign the letter.
I'll second that.
Removed by Mr. Giffen, seconded by Mr. Richardi. All those in favor?
Authorization for us to withhold that final payment until the SANS number comes out, or you just.
We're not going to hold, we're not going to withhold that final payment until the SANS number comes out. We can go ahead.
No, not this one, but as I said, there's one still.
I have two more. I'm waiting. I want to make sure they sign this letter.
Just the letter.
Oh, is this?
I made a copy and I just handed in my copy.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
All right. But I will come back to you to approve this. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Clevenger, your report.
Uh, two things, although the second thing is kind of in phases or factions, I guess. Uh, first off, the, uh, four fifteen Lake Shore property lost, uh, P U D. Uh, the briefs are due the twelfth. Uh, I've got the towns or the VCA's brief completed. I got the land commission brief completed, so we'll get it filed probably Thursday. Um, I know that the, uh, the petitioners briefs are also due, I guess, the, uh, and I know that my R's attorney is working on there, so, uh, that, those all should be in, and there's a hearing still scheduled for August twenty-second for the lawyers to show up and argue why their positions are correct. And the judge to decide what goes on. So we'll be back in court on the twenty-second. And, uh, see where we go from there.
What time? Nine AM?
Uh, I think it is nine AM. Is that a?
And that's where.
Yeah.
What it's usually been.
Yeah.
And we can't attend, right?
Uh, it's at nine AM, yes, and you can attend. It's going to be in the Marshal Circuit Court.
Yep. Thank you.
Um, no problem. Uh, then on Dunes, uh, housing. Uh, shit, um, I sent you a kind of a long email today, right, with the attachment of a subrecipient agreement. Uh, I think Karen had provided you earlier with a grant agreement, uh, between the town and Ready. Uh, I got a copy of that. When did we get a copy of that? It's been about a month ago or something like that. Well, the agreement did not have redevelopment commissions, uh, name on it as a party. And they're the ones that are putting up the one point three million. And so the grant agreement has a.
They're not putting up.
Yeah. Art well.
It's a matching funds.
Yeah.
So.
So anyway. Um, well, the, the redevelopment commission is applying the matching fund, right?
Correct, yes.
Right.
They're doing the matching.
Right. But the town is not.
But, right.
So the problem is that the grant agreement with the Ready folks doesn't distinguish all of that.
Right.
And Shannon was wanting us to sign the agreement tonight. Well, I was a little uneasy that we were going to sign up and be on the hook for one point three.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's the redevelopment commission would fly off the handle somewhere and not follow through. And that was not going to be a very pleasant situation, so. Uh, Shannon and I prepared this subrecipient agreement. I shared that with you, uh, today. I also shared that with the redevelopment commission. I'm looking for them to approve it at their meeting on August twenty-first. Uh, and then we will approve the grant agreement with the Ready folks on August twenty-second. We'll be comfortable that they've.
They've done it, and then we can do it.
We can do it, right? So that's that program. Uh, if you have some questions about the subrecipient agreement that I sent to you, uh, let me know. It's, um, as I kind of commented earlier, uh, it's a common kind of thing where, uh, the local government entity is theoretically applying for the federal grant money, but it's a sub-agency that's really. Thing, yeah. So, uh, I've seen the agreement before. It contains all sorts of boilerplate language that are required by the feds for, you know, all sorts of things. And, and of course, one of the big things is reporting and make sure that we're properly administering the funds and that kind of thing. What the, the part of the key to that will be make sure we have a certified grant administrator reviewing all that, which Shannon is, so that's, covers that. Um, another piece to that, and I mentioned that in the, in the email, was that, uh, we need somebody to do the bidding process. Shannon can do that. We need probably somebody to make sure that what's being construction or infrastructure matches our, uh, town specs. So we're probably needing to, uh, consider hiring Midwest to sort of, uh, number one, assist in the process, and they may have to assist in the bidding process as well. Make sure those petty are out there. And then number two, uh, construction inspections. Once work is being done by whoever is hired to do the infrastructure work, we're going to want to make sure that they're doing it correct. So there is going to be some town expenses that we're going to have to figure out. Some of that can be covered by the grant, and I don't know exactly how much of it or whatever, but we'll, we'll get, we'll get that figured out. Um, so that's that piece. The other, uh, Dunes housing thing is, um, we are still, or we are gaining more numbers, more uh, accurate information from the developer. Uh, and we're trying to put together a development agreement, contract basically between us and the developer that says this is what's going to happen. And here's what the incentive is that we're, the town may provide on all of this. Um, I know that, uh, Mr. Oosterbaum has been circulating some emails with some hoax, and I think he's got some numbers and, um, probably we're going to be looking toward, um, making some decisions. Um, council, redevelopment commission at next upcoming meeting, uh, to, um, you know, to kind of keep this thing moving forward. So, uh, more information will be set forth. I'm hoping to get a recommendation from some of the people who've been working on this so that not everybody has to chew all this up. Um, uh, the third, I guess, is part of all that's, that's kind of new to view is, uh, Mr. Fasenda and I have been working on a planning calendar to try and get all of this together. And he is of the opinion that we're going to need to establish an economic development commission. I think that we had one at one time.
Yeah.
I don't know where they are, it is, or who's involved, or whatever else.
Yeah, I think they just need to reappoint some.
So. Well, that's what I don't think. So, um, we're probably going to establish, uh, an economic development commission at the next meeting, which is August twenty-second. So I'm probably going to be looking for names of folks to be on that economic development commission. And obviously, we want somebody that's not going to try to sabotage the, the, you know, the, the project, so, but be thinking of or helping or giving some thought to who that. Um, and it would probably be best if everybody can agree, meeting both the council and the redevelopment commission. And then, uh, hopefully in the next, uh, by the August twenty-second meeting, we'll have a planning calendar that's going to set forth, uh, what's all involved, the notices, the meetings and so forth. So, um, uh, there'll be more to follow on that, but the, the EDC piece looks to be like the first part of all of this. Of course, we have to eventually approve a development agreement. Uh, and that's going to be, uh, coming up. Uh, I neglected, and I'll go back to the grant agreement for the, uh, August twenty-second meeting and the subrecipient agreement for the development, redevelopment commission on the twenty-first. Given the lawsuits is involved, I published notice of a here, public hearing to occur for both the RDC and, uh, or CRC and the council, their meeting on the twenty-first and our meeting on the twenty-second. So my hope and my suggestion is, is that we'll introduce the sub, the, the kind of the grant agreement. We'll kind of explain what's going on. We'll open it up for a public hearing. People can come in, comment, do their thing. And then, uh, you all, hopefully we'll act on that uh, grant agreement at that meeting. So, uh, if you got problems with that or issues or questions or whatever, get with me. Uh, and presumably the redevelopment commission will do the same thing at their meeting. They'll open it up after an introduction, conduct a public hearing, and then they'll decide to go forward with the with the subrecipient agreement. So, um, we really can't change the grant agreement because our DA says that's the way it is. Feel free to take a look at it. If you have questions or concerns, let me know. I guess we could see what we can do. The subrecipient agreement can be changed because that's between us and, uh, the redevelopment commission. So if you all have any questions or concerns about that, let me know. And if the redevelopment commission members have this issues with it or questions, they can do the same. So I think that's kind of an update as to where we are with the Dunes housing project. The, uh, grant agreement, uh, and the development agreement, and then the eventual follow-through with all the resolutions that are necessary to, to go through with establishing a tip district and, and all that kind of. And if anyone's got any questions, I'd like to answer them now. If you think about it and have questions.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anyone in the room here for a utility shut-off or ordinance violation? Anyone online?
There's no one online. Um, wanted to give me a letter from a Mr. David Lee, um, who would have had a an appeal date, or he would have needed to come to the meeting this evening, but wasn't able to, um, come. And, um, he basically had some issues with, I believe he received a ticket for a child that was under thirty-six inches riding on the, on the cart. Um, so if, if we want to go ahead and set up a hearing, I can notify him of that. Um, I'll pass around this letter. I would like to take a look.
We'll set up a hearing for the twenty-second.
Time. I, I will tell you, I'm not going to be here until I'm going to be rolling in at six thirty that night, so if someone else can take my place.
What about the next meeting after that? What about the next meeting after that?
September.
I mean.
That's fine.
That's fine with me. I mean, let's, I think we need a full, full tables.
Yeah. So what time should I come?
Um.
Five thirty.
Five thirty. And no one online? Okay. This is input. Yes, sir, Mr. Samuelson.
Bill Samson will have a more place or drive. Just curious, what ticket is issued? Is it supposed to be paid for thirty days unless they're disputing it, and then they get an extension on that if it's revolved or not? Just seeing if, waiting two meetings, if that's going to cause him the push against the due. You know what I mean?
This thing, they know the.
When you're sure a ticket they've got.
This is Clevenger, but I would say.
This letter from the.
I didn't read the letter, but I.
I didn't know if the dispute was called and then having taken it up.
I'd say it's one hole till the termination.
Till the hearing date?
Yeah.
He's going to, it's noticeable to request.
Right.
Down to thirty days.
Yeah.
So. Yes, sir.
Terry Cheslin, five twenty-seven. So I'm a couple of questions for you. Um, one is, what is the status on the town manager?
We have a new town manager. We have a new town manager, and he starts, Kevin Dante, and he starts Monday.
Right.
Very pleased and happy to have him on board.
There are just several, but
Um, and then, Karen, thank you for um motivating uh some of the lawns to be cut in this Bo, Batabano and Akron area, however, there is one uh persistent area that's um
On South Flummert Street?
No, it's um, it's at bottom, bottom, I don't know, in the corner, as it carries on.
Yes, I'm aware of that one, we're working on that.
He just seems to
Yes.
Look, she's way long.
But we're working on it.
Appreciate it. Um, also, as far as the no parking thing on South Flummert. My understanding is the no parking zone continues all the way to Marmot Street, which would basically go from infield all the way down to the task force by code. The painting was not completed down there, and there is a restriction of vehicle travel because um, at this point, one vehicle is consistently parked in a no parking side of the street, and now they're doing a construction on the other side with property and solar panels. I mean, there's a piece of equipment that's even further constricting traffic. Is there um
Big fork, Lou.
Yeah. But is there an intention then to complete the painting on that small section between, I guess it's Mill and um Marmot?
I will check with Bob.
That was my understanding, that was
And ordinance said there's no parking between um infield and Marmot. Um, and then finally, I have a concern about fireworks, especially this last couple of nights. Um
I thought it was you.
My dog does not like fireworks, and I know we have to put up with it, but when it goes off at twelve-thirty, one-thirty at night. Um, and I know there's very little you can do, but let me just say this, they're using city property to launch a fire. And that gets me upset, this has happened before, and I don't know who they is. But I'm just wondering why that vacant lot, lawn guard or evil check is um unfenced, it's totally accessible, and nothing's been done with it for three years now. Um, so now it's become an area where people feel that they can use it as a, as a launching platform. I'm not saying that would stop it, but at least they would be using city property to stop in the middle. So
I heard it, I heard it good.
I'll throw it out there, that, that should be nice.
We asked complaints on that. Much more, a lot of honey. It's work, we don't see it outside.
No, I absolutely understand that they light it more, not even more.
But is, is that something that could be fenced in? I mean, I see my R did, did that on, on Lake Shore.
Well, we're not ready to put a well in there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there was talk of that, I don't know how many months ago or years ago, but nothing's happened there either.
Well, there's been engineering studies done, we've got uh applications made to in our
Whoever, whoever you have to do it, yeah.
Well, Bob plus said they were going to do some, some drilling replacement, whatever, that was months ago, nothing, nothing.
Yeah, they've, they've done some of their drilling.
They've done all, yeah, they've done the drilling.
Just, you know.
Well, if, if you have people acting illegally on city property, that's profit, I'm just
Anything else, sir? Council issues? Rich?
Um, I would just like to thank probably Karen and all her work on the budget and um Kevin Dante, our new town manager, who's given up a lot of his personal time to attend a number of meetings before he's even on the payroll. And I think it's uh, I think it's been very instructive to him and to all of us, so thank you for all of your work on it, Karen.
Bill?
Nothing.
Thank you, Sally?
Nothing.
I have nothing, Bruce, uh, Mr. Hamm?
I have none.
Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So moved by Mr. Guthen, seconded by Mr. Hamm, we're adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.